Nice to see everyone. Nice to meet Mr. Borlaugh. It was fun. Nice to come in here. I think so. I think I got him a couple of times. Nice to be back. It's been many years. I appreciate the comments already made. These Black Lives Matter issues, I've followed closely LAPD, the commission meetings there. For a year and a half, I've been involved over there. I came as a minister at first and talked about the Six Commandments of not killing, and it's gone all over the place. But there was a lot of us who put a lot of everything we had into looking at lethal force, and there are changes over there, which I'm happy to report. I live in LA. I'm in northeast LA from Pasadena, one here, and I used to come to the meeting series where I started to speak in public. I'm running for mayor of City of LA next year against Mr. Garcia, if whoever else decides to show up. On ideas, not on money. I won't be spending any money to say vote for me. It will be ideas, and maybe the media will patch hole this in good ideas, by the way. I want to thank Friendship Baptist Church, who I'm half here for today and half not. They didn't officially give me anything to say today, but it's because of the Friendship Baptist that I came. I have pledged to them one Pasadena City Council meeting a month for the month that we have. So in the future, I might have an announcement or something from the church. But anyways, what we face in LA, we face here, and I guess as Bill Whacken is not Friendship Baptist, or maybe it carries over. My prayer is for Pasadena to have better law enforcement, as I'd say in LA too, and law in our schools. We desperately need law in schools. We need foot patrols so that we make community improvements, as Friendship Baptist is involved with. We need foot patrols naturally to get out there and enforce the improvements we make. And those are budget things, and my prayers at Pasadena, like with LA, we make a better budget to provide more for safety. For me, the budget should be about two things. It should be about safety and infrastructure. And if you're not aimed to either of those things, I don't think it belongs on a political budget. More on that in the future. God bless you and those speaking today, and it's nice to be back for a moment, see you again. Nice to see everybody, and the new faces, too, Margaret. God bless y'all, Mr. Corning, Andrew Zill Bogart. I don't know when I was here last. But I did want to also say, I would really be careful with not starting at 6:30 on public meeting. There is something there called the Pledge of Allegiance, and I come from a Navy family, and when you mess around with the timing of a pledge of allegiance, just be real careful of that. It's my humble recommendation that you hold the closed session, that you don't finish at 6:30, you hold it after the adjournment and come out to the public. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Genevieve Amenduri, followed by David Whitehead.
Good evening. It's my first time, a little reuster, unlike everyone, from a recent attack on the queer community of color, the LGBTQI community of color, and I acknowledge the acknowledgement you made, and I want to say that Jasmine Abdullah Richards is a self-identified queer black woman who, from her own community, has formed, as I've learned, a real passion and conviction for educating herself and her own community, empowering through that education and organizing in an attempt to do what history has shown us really is the real work, right, of the people, for the people. It's the grassroots efforts that I have, and I'm learning still, sees the most powerful because it's the most relevant change that's needed, right? People that are the most impacted by what's going on, when they can get together and strategize and identify and grieve together, because again, these are issues that are life and death for many of them, as Kendrick McPhee's name was mentioned, and as I've learned his story and of the courageous and fearlessness of Jasmine and others forming the Black Lives Matter Pasadena community as an off Friendship Baptist community or organization in calling out the things that are real life and death threat for them every single day. We acknowledge the queer community today, right, tonight, and their real threat that they face, the bigotry that is real, that has been our history in this country, that I'm just learning about, having read the new Jim Crow and Arrested Justice and Just Mercy even, watching recently on the Black Panthers, the J. Edgar Hoover revealed documents of targeting coalitions. The real undisputable effort through even law enforcement locally to break apart any means of coalition across vulnerable communities has been documented as violent and by any means necessary. And where I wouldn't have thought it true before, I have been witness to video of Jasmine hosting where police officers that are local to her are taunting her, are smiling, laughing in her face. I think one of them is involved in Kendrick McPhee murder. This stuff is sick. I understand that those are human individuals, their jobs are mighty tough, but this is a real crisis, and I implore all of you to bring the full support and your weight of influence to have Jackie Lacy and Michelle Navarria, I don't know the pronunciations of my name, I implore you to please bear in mind, with a full conscience of decency, to do what you can, drop these charges. I'm not a legal pro, I don't know how that works, but I'm raising my voice to say that this has to stop. We have to empower communities to organize and not meet them with police intimidation everywhere they go, as an anti-insurability phenomenon of our community.
Could you please bring your counsel?
Sure. I don't see children facing what these young kids faced that day in Pasadena when they were equated with white mobs that were violent and used to hang and lynch black people. That is an outrage, and I implore you now to drop those charges and to not further persecute this person. Thank you.
David Whitehead, followed by Anne Shai, followed by Michael Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is David Whitehead. I'd like to speak on a different subject, which was, I don't think, at the end of your closed session, and that is the property at 78 North Orlando, which is the YWCA property. I would like to voice my concerns about the proposed YWCA Kimpton Hotel project once again. I feel that this project is moving forward as a beta complete, and there seems to be no way to stop it. I'm very concerned that there should be more public comment about this project. Many of us don't want it. Our Pasadena Civic Center is a treasure, and many of us care a great deal about our beautiful city and our green space. Please respect that, and please understand our concern, and please make this process as open as possible for public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Anne Shai, followed by Michael Williams.
Might be helpful for, at some point, to talk about the process for, I might, for approval of the project.
I was gonna wait for Anne.
Okay, thank you. I'm also speaking about 78 North Orlando, and I don't know how many people actually know from that address that that is the YWCA project. We have asked many times to have that actually listed along with the address so that people recognize it on a public document. I looked at the code cited here, 54956.8, and it says that a legislative body of a local agency may hold a closed session with its negotiator prior to the purchase, sale, exchange, or lease of real property by or for the local agency, et cetera, et cetera. However, prior to the closed session, the legislative body of the local agency should hold an open and public session in which it identifies its negotiators, the real property or real properties which the negotiation is making certain, and the persons or persons with whom its negotiators may negotiate. Now, I have no idea who Jesse Stein and Joe Long are. This entire process has been less than transparent from the very beginning. The public does not know who were the original applicants, there were several apparently, who wanted to develop this property. We don't know what the architectural designs were, which I understand were submitted also. We don't know whether there were other uses considered. I could go on and on. Anyway, the problem is really transparency here, and I see this, again, a closed session as another instance of that, and I wonder what is wrong with sharing it with the public? Why is it not being shared with the public? Perhaps not every detail, but at least more than is being shared with the public. So that's my question. And then the other thing that I discovered that, the final EIR has been released, and if you want to have a copy, it's $127, 15 cents a page. Now, that, I know I can get a copy of somewhere in Pasadena for a lot less than that, and I think the library doesn't even charge that much for a copy of something. So I think this is price gouging, and I wish the city, and this is not just about this issue, but about all the documents that the city produces. The assumption is that everybody has access to the internet, and that's not true. I really think that the city could explore providing documents at a fair price to the public. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity. Since June 6, 2012, we've had 15 public meetings involving council committees, the Planning Commission, the Design Commission on the YWCA property. Going forward, there'll be an opportunity either in June or July for more public participation as the Planning Commission considers the EIR, and ultimately in August, we believe that that will be in front of the City Council. Also, there was public disclosure previously, although it was a couple of years ago now because this process is taking quite a while, that we did have six proposals initially, all of them involved some form of hotel project that was disclosed quite some time ago to the public, so I just wanted to put down the record. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Williams, followed by Camila Moore.
Okay, first of all, we want to just say that I'm here to talk about dropping charges that have been brought against Jasmine Abdullah. First of all, being with the ridiculousness of these charges. I mean, they're absolutely ridiculous. I mean, the lynching charge was ridiculous, but yeah, you guys can say that was the city's fault, right, that's LA. But these charges are even worse and even more ridiculous than those. I mean, she's charged with a terrorist threat, which is for saying something out of protest. And then she was also charged with assault, a battery on a peace officer with what came from this very council room. John Kennedy can attest that he got to face some puzzles, maybe, because he doesn't know what the heck he's talking about. Seriously, like, put a battery on a police, on a peace officer? No one saw that. Everyone saw that the police officer went after Jasmine after she rushed by him. That's what we call assault on a peace officer. So these charges that are brought against Jasmine are ridiculous, and if not, just outright screams of police targeting of Jasmine Abdullah. If that doesn't scream police targeting Jasmine Abdullah, they have surveillance. They've been surveilling Jasmine Abdullah for a while. They have testimony about surveilling her, about the terrorist threats. They have video camera where they're pointing and saying, "Look, get her on tape, get Jasmine on tape." Even the police during the trial said that they weren't surveilling Jasmine Abdullah. So they perjured themselves in the middle of a court. The police, your police department, perjured themselves. They also have video of the person who supposedly got terroristic threats, who she terroristically threatened, saying that the police came to him and coerced him to make the testify and coerced him to witness and press the charges. Literally, they went on a camera, on a wireless camera, at a red light camera, found the person who supposedly Jasmine made the comments to, went to him and told him, "You need to press charges on this person because this person is a bad person, this is a bad influence here. You're gonna do us a favor if you press charges against this woman." That's literally what they did on the tape. You guys say that you guys don't, you said during the felony charges that you guys cannot, you guys had nothing to do with that, and you guys, there's nothing that you could have done to help or stop or whatever. This is a chance for the City of Pasadena to just do something. Drop the charges. They're nonsense, they're nonsensical. This is purely targeting by the Pasadena police on a person who tries to help her community. It's clear as day, you can see it from testimony and other things like that. Drop charges, drop the charges on her, and make your city of Pasadena look good, because we're already, again, as you hear, people are identifying as with Ferguson, Flint, other countries, other cities who are infamous and their police being brutal to black people. Don't be part of that list.
So, Ms. Boni Rees, I wonder if you can, because we've had a number of people testify and asking us to drop charges, you explain what we can and cannot do and what the charges are.
Yes, Mayor, members of the Council, and members of the public. I will keep my remarks brief, being mindful of the ethical obligations that apply under professional rules of conduct. Under those rules, a prosecutor is required to avoid making any statements outside court that could materially compromise or interfere with an adjudicating proceeding in court. It's also inappropriate to file or dismiss charges based on political pressure, and the Council actually cannot direct action in a particular case. I can share with you that there are two open misdemeanor criminal cases filed by the City Prosecutor's Office against Ms. Richards based on her role in two separate incidents, one of which was in response to a 911 call from an innocent bystander and the other involved activities that took place in the council chambers. Neither of those cases are related to the felony charges that were filed by the DA's office, and neither I nor anyone in our office was ever part of that felony filing in the District, private District Attorney's Office.
Got that.
The next scheduled court date is July 14th. We have consulted with Ms. Richards' attorney and will continue to work toward a resolution which is fair to the victims and the defendant, and that will further the interest of justice. To that end, our prosecutors are continuing to reach out to Ms. Richards' attorney to pursue an appropriate resolution of the two pending misdemeanor cases. So it's proceeding, and we are very cognizant of rights that need to be protected by all involved.
Camila Moore, followed by, I'm sorry, unclear, Sergey Agalov, Alcozoff.
Hi, okay, so this is in the part of my comment, but I want to thank all of you all, or most of you all, for exceedingly seeming to be listening. We're asking Madison, this stuff coming through is paperwork, and on this iPad, really showing off as lack of professionalism and lack of time management skills, so, so, thank you all for seeming to be listening. So this is the start of my public comment. My name is Camila Moore. I am a Pasadena High School graduate, recent graduate of UCLA, and incoming 1L at Colonial Law School. I'm here to talk about and support of Jasmine Richards, who has been persecuted by the City of Pasadena since she started Black Lives Matter Pasadena. I met Jasmine last year at Lopin Resca Park because I sympathetic to social justice issues, and I wanted to help, seeing that there was a need in Pasadena for resources for black and brown youth. So when I was Lopin Resca Park, that's when I was first able to see Jasmine. That's when I was able to see her providing food and other resources for poor children in the park because the city did not provide it for them. So that's my first interaction with Jasmine Richards. I understand that the misdemeanor charges that she has been charged with has came after she became active in Black Lives Matter. So please understand, everyone, that Jasmine Richards is not a criminal, she is a political prisoner. She comes from a long line of history in this country of people coming from the lower class, trying to rise up and build their community for the liberation of black, brown, and other oppressed people. She's just a part of that long line of history, as many of the people who have talked before me have said. So I understand, thanking Ms. Sabine Rees for your update, but I would like to tell you and everyone else at the Council that you all need to support Pasadena citizens like Jasmine Richards. Pasadena citizens that are doing the job that you all should be doing every single day, which is uplifting and providing resources for the youth in the city that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Agalov, Alcozoff?
Yeah. I am a member of the Pasadena Social Committee of the Pasadena Transit Coaches, and we dine together, and use the photo bros, so we want to make a public statement. The Peace and Social Concern Committee of the Pasadena Orange Road, religious society friends or coaches, that discuss and take action on any issue that affects our society. The issue of the treatment of Jasmine Abdullah, known as Jasmine Richards, by the police and the City Attorney, came to discussion. The committee summarized the statement immediately as follows. It is a right to try out within the nation, and members of the Police Department should be well enough trained and have mature enough people to be able to take some uncomfortable language without a leading in a brutal and hostile and overreaction manner. The City Attorney, in charging a black woman, will lynch her. It is over the top, it is crazy. We need to address a business issue. Now, this is my comment. The persecution of Jasmine Abdullah affects our society deeply by creating a dangerous presence to intimidate and silence off the narrow press. Now, it is my understanding that she was charged after the fact. How was Jasmine know that she was maybe charged with a felony? We have a problem in society in that there is too many laws. Does any of you, does the attorney know how many misdemeanors and felonies are there in the state of California? Nobody knows, probably. I really, I really like to know, because I'm doing research, and I can't find the number. But I found that there was a research that was done by the Department, they tried to find out the felonies, and they failed about, I'm like, maybe five, they failed twice. How many laws and misdemeanors are there? How was a person supposed to know that by trying to defend a person, that was what had to be taken to custody, and by seeing how many black people have been taken to custody and then killed by the police? Imagine that. You were trying to defend your people, your community. And so she was, oh, yes, that's right, but was she a criminal, a felon? I ask you, I tell you, tell me the number, or at least give me the range. How many misdemeanors and how many felonies are there in the state of California? Please, this is something that is affecting us all. This is not more than political persecution, intimidation, well, those are what makes society changing, society.
Next speaker is David Lanas, followed by Juan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council Members, my name is David Lanas. I am the Treasurer of the Pasadena Police Department. I come on behalf of the Sergeants, Corporals, and Officers of the Police Department, almost 200 members. We've heard a lot about Jasmine Richards and about opinions in regards to her arrest and her conviction for the felony charge. We're hearing a lot about the pending misdemeanor charges. As an officer of 23 years with the Pasadena Police Department, I'm currently Detective with a fugitive unit. I want to speak for our members. I want the voice to be heard in regards to how police officers feel about this. Police officers support peaceful, stable society. We support free speech. We support individuals being able to say what they feel and how they feel. What we can support and what society cannot support is to have individuals go outside the Constitution, go outside the laws that are written in regards to keeping peace in our community. When violence erupts, be it on an individual, be it on an officer, we have an obligation to act, to keep peace in this community. All we're asking as police officers is to recognize what we do is very difficult in the climate we work. We have individuals with so many agendas, we have so many differences of opinion, but as police officers, we're here to keep the peace because we love this city, we love what we do. And to hear the voices concerns us, but we do our jobs to the death of our abilities, and we know that we're within the law. We present a case to the District Attorney, and they take it from there. If a conviction is made by a trial or by a jury of an individual's peers, then we have to accept that, no matter how much we disagree with it. The law is written, and the law is there for a reason, to keep a peace in society, to have standards and morals to abide by, so individuals of all race, of all color can voice their opinions, no matter how angry, no matter how peaceful. We support that, and we protect that every day as individuals, as police officers on the street, no matter how boisterous or how loud someone can get, or how angry that individual is, we respect the right to be able to exercise your free speech. The way you go outside the boundaries of the law, we lose sight of civilized society. And that's where we, as the peacekeepers, have been hired and have been told and have been empowered to say, "Enough. Step back, take a look at what you're doing, allow the courts to make a decision." That's why the scales of justice are here. So please, recognize that the police officers are here to do a job for the city, for the community, for yourselves, for everybody involved. We're not here to persecute people, we're not here to politically persecute people. We're here to uphold the Constitution, that's what we're sworn to do, and we're trying to do that in our best of our abilities. Thank you.
Juan.
All right, so first and foremost, what this human being said is actually contradictory to the lynching charge. Lynching at least in this area came into the law in 1933 to protect folks of color who were being taken by the KKK, who still meets in Alcozene Hills and the Pasadena Hills. So this human being doesn't know we're talking about the peace and order, because it's talking about a lynch mob, right? First and foremost, there was no mob. Second, there was a protection of a child who was going to be unlawfully arrested, which is also protected in the state of California. You're actually allowed to assault, quote unquote, or defend yourself against any peace officer who is unlawfully trying to arrest somebody. So both of the things that this human being is saying is incorrect. Additionally, there was no jury of Jasmine's peers, there was no judge of Jasmine's peers. There was, actually, there lacks a lot of accountability for peers within even this standard. They were all white folks, and even if they weren't white folks, you have a lot of internalized white supremacy, especially in Pasadena, as we've aforementioned, there's the KKK that still meets in your hills, but there's no action by these paramilitary officers to go and wipe that out, right? That's kind of what I'm seeing, that's peaceful order to allow the KKK to exist in your hills. Y'all really want to maintain that, though, right? That's the peaceful order that your 23-year-old fugitive detective maintains, right? And so if we move on forward with that, Jasmine was then in prison for protecting somebody who was going to be unlawfully arrested, in addition to the fact that other folks are arrested that day, and when they were arrested, because they were minors, they weren't prosecuted, going to the fact that actually, that these charges were fabricated post the circumstances that actually arose. So I mean, if all you folks, each one of y'all, with your empty stares and empty souls, dead eyes, keep pushing this white supremacy, this white KKK meeting in your hills, protected by these fools, these paramilitary fools, by the same funds that funded all of y'all, right? This fool's the treasurer. Y'all remember what happened to the treasurer in your city council? I remember, that fool stole a whole bunch of money. Yeah, that's the beacon of truth, right? That's who you want to listen within, the spokesperson of your paramilitary department, the fool that knows how to hide the money. Picking books is also something that's a crime, but I'm sure that fool knows how to do it real well. We digress, right? Lynching is a crime that's supposed to be to protect folks of color. The fact that there are so many unlawful arrests, and that most of the unlawful arrests lead to the persecution, death, and criminalization of folks of color, further emphasizes how your city is not procuring safety with white supremacy. Y'all are a bunch of cogs, a white supremacist, a bunch of cogs. Y'all are missing the hood because y'all are a bunch of white supremacists supporting this paramilitary department. My sister's in jail right now because y'all are a bunch of fools. Y'all want to take your hands off and say that, "No, it wasn't us who put them in jail." Well, y'all are putting us in pain, Bob, dude. Well, y'all are putting us in a pain box, dude.
That completes our public comment on matters not on the agenda. All right, let's proceed.